Good evening and welcome to the Dyton Board of Selectmen Special Meeting, Wednesday, May 18, 2022. Meeting will start at 7:05 PM. This meeting will be a hybrid meeting. The Zoom login is meeting ID code 883-3070-7798. Passcode is 068007. To call in, to hook in through phone, 1-929-205-6099. This meeting will also be on continued play on Dyton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye, present.
Leonard Hull is also chairman, is present. Could we all stand for the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda for this evening is to enter into executive session. Under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, a fire chief contract. Also, under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If the chair declares, the chair declares, that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public body. Potential, the item under discussion, potential real property acquisition for library operations. We will be returning to open session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to enter executive session.
I so move.
Chairman Hull will step down and second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you. Announce that this meeting is being recorded. If anyone is looking to watch it on television, they may on continued play on Dyton Channel 9 or on YouTube at www.youtube.com/townofdyton. We are limiting public input this evening to the items on the agenda. We will be having a meeting next week and we will open general input session at that time. The first item on our limited agenda for the special meeting is to review, discuss, and act on the municipal master agreement for sustainable materials of the recovery program.
So, yes, so, yes, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the sustainable, the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program or the SMRP, is it annual grant that we receive from the, from the Department of Environmental Protection? Based on the email that's been provided in the packet, like, we do anticipate receiving funding from the next, the next, the next SMRP round that will begin in July 1st, 2022. So, all this agreement is asking for, like, is, like, is for the board to designate the chairman of the board of, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen to authorize the grant when we receive it after the beginning of the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions. I brought it.
I would like to take a motion.
I'll make a motion that, that we allow the town administrator to sign off on any grant. If we given a grant.
From the Department of Environmental Protection?
DEP. Is it regarding Sustainable Materials Recovery Program?
Yes.
Yes. So, we haven't been awarded that, but by allowing you to sign it in the future, if we get a grant?
Be able to accept it upon award. So, this is an annual award, so we get this as a matter of routine.
I'll second that motion.
And I hope Karen, you're able to interpret my motion there and word it correctly for me. I'm voting aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next item is to review, discuss, and act on the fiscal year 2023 budget review and final budget recommendations. The first item on the agenda is the Board of Assessors. At the last meeting, we voted to table this discussion till our next meeting. There was a little bit of confusion that a vote was taken prior to the motion to table. And that had to do with, I believe, line item 5302. Is that correct, Mr. Mullin?
Five, so, there are the line items that were in question were relating to line item 5302 that has since been updated by the Board of Assessors. Also, there was some discussion about line item 5131 relative to overtime and additional hours. So, we went back, had a conversation with the principal assessor. And, and we have an updated Board of Assessors vote as well. And so, their updated departmental requests are reflected in the budget on the screen, I think, before you now. The other, the other thing to discuss with this budget as well relates to the stipend issue that has, that has been discussed. The, the, the current, the current proposed departmental request for these stipends are actually, are actually proposed to be more than 2%. And so, like, at this point, like, I would, so, as we go forward, we, and as we talk about the stipend issue this evening, like, you'll, so, you'll see that a proposed, that the, that the, that the, that the stipend for, like, a member now, sorry, is, 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 like, is 4855 per year. So, that, so, that, so, that multiplied by two. One second, I just want to make sure. Yeah, so, so, the 4855 multiplied by 1.02 actually comes out to, like, 4952 rather than the straight, oh, 5,000. So, 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 like, if the board, if the board is going to continue, like, it's recommend, recommendation for stipends at 2% to keep things, to keep things, to keep things consistent, like, I, so, I would recommend reflecting those, those updated, are the updated stipends accordingly as well. So, there are three things, there, there are three potential changes here for the board to consider. One is relative to the stipend for the elected board members. Then, there was a, then there was a revision in line 5131 that was originally proposed at $2,000. We have decreased it to $1,000.
We didn't vote on that. That was the item that was tabled.
Yes, yes.
Item, line item 5303
Yes.
was the one that we voted on prior to the motion to table. So, the $8,000
Is in.
is, was voted last meeting.
Yes.
So, unless there is a motion to reconsider that, I believe, that is a recommendation.
Yes, so, 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 but the 53.
That's account, no, I'm sorry, yes. The appraisal.
Yeah, so, the recommendation for 5302 is final at this point.
Yes.
But, so, but, I'll, we'll, where we do need updated clarity is, so, so, is on the stipend issue for the chairman and the members.
Correct.
Then, in line 5131, because we, we, like, in the Board of Assessors recommended to, so, cut their request in that line by $1,000.
That's the point, that's at the point, last meeting, where we tabled.
Yep, so, and then, as a result of the, of the increase, as a result of the, of the decrease in line 5131, they're, they're also proposing in line 5300, a $3,500 professional and technical line. So, in the, like, in the $1,000 in funding that was actually cut out of line item 53, 5131, are largely be absorbed, all but $200 in inline item 5300. So, so, the reason was, the consulting that has been provided in the past few months, so, up until recently, all was provided by, by someone who was, who was an employee of the assessing department. So, but, we needed to cut the $1,000 out of there because that, so, because that former employee is no longer an employee. So, and we can't, and we can't pay that former employee out of a personnel line because, because that mem, because that individual is no longer an employee.
Thank you. Regarding the stipend issue, the Board of Selectmen made a motion, and it passed, to do 2% stipend for departments that, so, requested. And on my list, I have the sewer, ADA, harbor master, planning board, Board of Health, and the assessors. Though I know, at the last FINCAR meeting, we heard some opposition to that. However, the Board of Selectmen did vote to go with that 2% stipend. And at this time, I will continue, I'm going to say that I continue to support it. And unless I have a motion to reconsider, I feel that the Board of Selectmen recommendation, which was voted at a previous meeting, should stand. Mr. Pacheco?
Did we actually, did we vote on that? Or, I know we discussed, I wasn't sure we voted. I'm supporting a 2% increase in stipends for anyone who, any department that has asked for the increase. They're asking for a 2.98% increase. I have a question regarding 5102. Is that for, is that the three members?
Yes.
Okay, so.
The, one second, I just have to, so, it's a three-member board. Two of the three members are in 5102. The third member as a chairman is in 5101. So, the 5102 includes two members.
But, the stipend would also go to 5101 as well.
It would go to both, yes.
Yes.
So, my calculations on 5102, for the two salary members, it should be $9,905.22. Does that sound, for 2% of $9,711 is $194.22. You add that to the.
So, so, one of the things, so, and this is why this budget is, like, so, like, I don't even know how to explain it because the, up until this year, the budget for elected officials has included a full-time personnel. So, we've, so, we've separated that out, obviously, because that full-time personnel retired.
Right.
And so, we have separated the lines. The, the, so, the, so, the 40, the 48, 4855.
Forty-four.
Forty-four times 1.02 is, oh, 495255.
Times what?
1.02 at 2%.
Why is it 1.0, why isn't just the 2%? I'm getting that.
So, so, to add, so, to add 2% on, so, to add 2% on to the number, you multiply it by 1.02, like, and then you come out to the final number.
Are you sure about that?
Yes. Yeah, I'm absolutely positive, so.
2%, of any figure, you multiply it by .02 and it will give you what 2% is.
And then you need to add it on to the original. But if you multiply it by 1.02, you get to the same number.
1.02, okay, so, did you come up for the total figure? $9,905.22?
Yes, and 10 cents.
I got 22 cents, or do you have 10 cents?
Yeah.
Got 22 cents.
Okay. So, because what I did is I, like, is I, is I did 4855.44 times 1.02, that is the base, the 2% increase for one member.
Right.
So, then you multiply, that comes out to 495255. Then you multiply that times two, and you get $9,905.10.
Okay, I got 22, but you're, you're correct. It's two ways to do it, but you did it to get that one figure. The, you know, the, the figure, I did, I added, you know, I got my figure, then I had to add it to the original figure, blah, blah, blah. So, are you entertaining motions?
I'm going to have to entertain a motion on this because I, I thought we had voted on this earlier. But just to be on the safe side, Mr. Pacheco, I will entertain.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend the budget for the Board of Assessors with the change, with the changes that were presented to us tonight. But that the, on line 5102, that the stipend increase only be 2%. I'm not sure what the exact figure comes out now for the total budget. Do we have a figure on that?
Yep, one, one's updating it. Okay.
I cannot support that motion. I would like to go through each line item because there were two items that were in question. There was the stipend, and then there was line item 5131, overtime, additional hours.
Yes.
At the last meeting, Mr. Karen had voiced an objection to the Board of Selectmen recommendation of $2,000. And I had started to explain my concerns. And I do have concerns, and I'm going to address them this evening. Currently, the Board of Assessors is $7,700 in the red. Since March of this year, I have called for the end of payment for the consultant and knowing well, fully well that they were going to go into deficit spending, which they have. Today, I received a warrant request for a payment for that consultant, knowing fully well that that budget was in the red. I find that to be irresponsible budget management. The town administrator's recommendation for that line item was $1,000. And I'm asking that it be the Board of Selectmen's recommendation that 5131 be cut to $1,000.
That was, that was my motion, though, was including, it was including whatever changes were made, which reduced that from 2,000.
We didn't make the change last meeting.
No, but tonight, I made a motion to accept that the Board of Selectmen recommend the budget of the Board of Assessors that was presented to us tonight with the exception of just a 2% increase on the stipend, on the 5102.
And we need to reduce our recommendation to $1,000.
Yeah, yeah, the current recommendation, so, until there's a vote, is $2,000. But based on the updated departmental request, I think we are saying, are saying the same thing, just in a different way, so.
Could you give us a line, final line item based on a $1,000?
Yes.
And, and I think it'd be easier to vote on that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yep.
No, no problem, thank you.
So, so, the personnel budget based on that would be $190,603.25, which would be a grand total budget based on the discussion of $218,153.25.
And that number would include the 2% stipend?
Yes.
What is that figure again, please?
Thank you very much.
And that's including the stipend, right? The reduction in the stipend?
Yes, it is, and I'll, yes, and you can see where I made the changes.
I'll make the motion again, it's going to be a long night. I'm making a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the Board of Assessors budget, which is account number 141, as presented to us tonight in the amount of $218,153.25 be recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
I second that. Uh, Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next, the fire.
I just, I do want some clarification. You said that you ordered the assessors' office.
I requested.
Requested, you said you told them not to, and they continued to, but wouldn't that, wouldn't that be something you have to take back to the Board of Selectmen? That I can't just go up and tell one the problem?
I had spoken to the town administrator to, to express my concerns, too.
But they didn't have to respond to that, right? They didn't, it was.
No, but I also understand that prior to me coming on as chairman, a letter was sent to the Board of Assessors requesting a meeting with you, Janelle, and Town Administrator Mullin. And the Board of Assessors took no action to meet with you, nor did they respond to emails, which I have, from Mr. Mullin, requesting a meeting, requesting for clarification, requesting a response. I have those emails.
Yeah, no, I, I'm not questioning that. I'm questioning by what authority you, from what you said earlier, you said that you told them not to continue hiring.
I asked through T.A. Mullin for that to stop.
Okay, that's not what you said before, but okay.
Thank you.
So, the next budget on the agenda is the fire budget and the ambulance budget, which, as you know, are both, are both interrelated. We, as, as the board knows, we, we hadn't been able to update the personnel figures based on the fact that, that we've been in collective bargaining with the firefighters' union over, so, so, based, so, based on efforts and the efforts, and the efforts of Chairman Hull and the fire chief and the board, we, we have been able to come to an agreement on a successor CBA, to the CBA that ends the end of this, this fiscal year. So, the cost in the, of, of, of a two-year agreement for the fire union are included in the budget at, at this point, based on the agreement in both the fire budget and the ambulance budget. I really want to thank the fire union for their work with the town and the partnership that they do have with the town. We do have an agreement that in year one, the cost for a 2% increase in wages. And in, and year two, costs for a 2.5% increase in wages as well. And, uh, in the discussions with the fire union as well, we also, uh, we also in the agreement reflected the increase in the education incentive as well, which is also included in the, in the updated budget figures. So, based on that, that brings the, the total bottom line recommendation for the fire budget to, to, hold on one moment. There's a difference here, sorry. 668. 441. Hold on, there's a difference here, I just want to make sure it's.
Yep.
Pulled up, I'm sorry, 642. That's, that's right there. There we go, it should be fine. Jesus Christ, sorry. Jesus Christ, sorry.
It's the fourteen forty-one.
Where is it?
Right there, let's move that up, up two. Up what, down? Right here.
Where?
To the right. There it was. No.
No, it's in here, they, so it's, it's, um, I apologize. Oh, that is why, okay. We increased the gas, the gasoline line, based on, oh, based on market issues, that should, okay. Um, I apologize. So, the total bottom line, um, at, um, at this point, for the, um, the fire, uh, the fire budget is seven hundred and seventy thousand and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents. So, that would be the updated budget request.
It was seven hundred and seventy thousand, how much?
Seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars in, oh my god, seven hundred and seventy thousand and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that on account number twenty, uh, two-twenty, Fire Department, that the Board of Selectmen recommend the budget of seven hundred and seventy thousand, seventy-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I second that. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. The ambulance services.
So, was same, same explanation here. Start with pennies off, I'm just trying to make sure. Like forty cents off, oh, there it is. Which brings the, a new bottom line for the ambulance to eight hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I have a question.
Yes.
In regards to that number. The Board of Selectmen's recommendation, which I believe we voted earlier, was seven hundred eighty-nine thousand, five hundred, eleven dollars and seventy-three cents.
Yes.
Um, the new number that you gave us was eight hundred and seven thousand. So, would the, would it be accurate to say that the Board of Selectmen recommendation would be three thousand more dollars, and that would make it seven hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and eleven and seventy-three cents? Because the Board of Selectmen, uh, there was a, a difference.
Yes, so the difference between what is now being recommended and the Board of, in the Board of Selectmen's initial recommendation is the cost of the, the cost of the negotiated contract.
Okay, thank you. So, the TA number would be eight hundred and seven thousand?
Five forty-one fifty-nine.
Five forty-one sixty-nine?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions.
I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that on account number two-thirty-one, the ambulance services, that the Board of Selectmen recommend the budget in the total amount of eight hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next, Highway Department?
Education.
Education.
Oh, I'm sorry, education.
This, Mr. Chairman, thankfully, is a little more straightforward. Again, I apologize for the discrepancies. No budgets. Uh, the only update here, as you know, the FINCOM approved the, uh, the recommendation for the education, uh, for their education budget, recommendations last week. The Board of Selectmen, to this point, has had placeholders, has had placeholders, placeholders for these. Uh, like we have included the requests and numbers, so we could really see our fiscal position. Uh, but we don't have, we don't have a Board of Selectmen vote, a recommendation vote on the education budgets yet, but actually, that is a, a good thing in a way, because, um, on Monday of this week, we got, um, an updated assessment request from Bristol Aggie, and they were proposing, um, an additional increase in their assessment by, by just under ten thousand dollars. And the reason for that is, uh, like, is I believe they just went out to the market to get the bond and the debt, and the, and the debt, and the debt service, uh, like, uh, like for their, for their school building project. Up until now, they were actually funding it with bond anticipation notes, and, uh, based on the interest rates that are out there now, and the increases in, in interest rates as well, that has changed the, the structure of the debt, and, um, uh, like in which they, uh, we now have to absorb a little more of that increased interest rate. So, the updated, uh, the updated, the figure that I did, uh, update in the departmental request, um, so for Bristol Aggie, would increase from a hundred thirty-seven, eight hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents to one hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents. And I'll update my recommendation as well.
Will we need two motions on that, or will we just, uh?
The bottom line is fine with me.
The bottom line?
Yep.
Okay. I, I just wanna note, as was the case in the building of that beautiful facility over there at Bristol Aggie, they were very frugal. And I was reviewing their numbers of their per pupil cost. They are very reasonable, and, and I wanna commend the administration and the members of the committee that helped to put together the Bristol Aggie budget. They really put together a budget that not only provides outstanding education, but it was done in a way that really took the taxpayers' concerns into consideration. So, your final motion, I mean, your final numbers would be?
Twelve million, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'm sorry, twelve million, five hundred ninety?
Eight.
Eight.
Two hundred and twelve fifty-six.
I'll, if you have any questions?
I have no questions. I'll make a motion if you are taking motions.
Yes.
On account number three hundred, education. I'm asking that the Board of Selectmen recommend the budget of twelve million, five hundred ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Highway construction. And maintenance, four-twenty-two.
So, the next two budgets follow the same logic of the, of the, of the fire and the ambulance budgets. We have also been, we've also been negotiating with our fire, sorry, highway union as well, and we have, we've come to an agreement, uh, like actually, that there's an MOA actually later in the packet as well, but for budget purposes as well, uh, we init, we set our budget process level funding personnel until we got to a, until we got to an agreement with the highway union. Thanks again to the work and our partnership with the highway union. We now have an agreement with the, um, with the union that is a three-year contract, two percent in year one, two-and-a-half percent in year two, and, uh, two-and-a-half percent in year three. And, um, it's, uh, like, it's a very, it's a very fair agreement. Uh, like it also includes, um, increased, um, uh, like in, um, so, uh, so in the professional stipend, uh, that they receive, and it also, it also allows for a promotion, uh, for one of the employees to, to an assistant foreman. And, um, so the updated, uh, the updated figures, uh, included in the, in the departmental request, um, and so that would be, um, so we would increase from the, uh, the initially approved six hundred and three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents to six hundred and eighteen thousand and four dollars and thirty cents.
I'm sorry, six hundred and eighteen thousand?
Yeah, six hundred and eighteen thousand, uh, and four dollars and thirty cents. So, six-one-eight-zero-zero-four-point-three. I think I have to go back to elementary school and, uh, and get a refreshing wording of bigger numbers.
Thank you.
So, that would be my recommendation there.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions.
Actually, I'm sorry, that's on the personnel side.
Yep.
The total bottom line would be seven hundred eighty thousand, one fifty-four thirty.
I'm sorry, se-
I'm sorry, seven hundred eighty thousand?
Yeah.
One fifty-four thirty.
One fifty-four thirty?
Yes.
It's in, it's on the budget, that number.
It's in the departmental request.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you, sorry. I was looking at the TA's recommendation, the Board of Selectmen's recommendation. Let me, let me ask you, why the disparity between your recommendation and, oh, wait, let me, let me rephrase that, why the change in heart?
Change in heart.
Your original recommendation to the departmental request?
So, to be honest with you, when I went back and updated the spreadsheet based on the CBA, I only filled in the departmental request, and I didn't extend that over to my recommendation. I just actually did that, so my recommendation matches the departmental request, because the departmental request is what we use to update the number based on the CBA.
Mr. Pacheco?
I have no questions.
I'll entertain a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that on account number four-twenty-two, Highway Construction and Maintenance, that the Board of Selectmen recommend the budget that's been presented to us in the total amount of seven hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and thirty cents.
I'll second that.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is also an aye. Street cleaning and stormwater.
Um, same, um, the majority of this budget has not changed at all, but there in the, in the salary full-time line, you'll notice, you'll notice a very, very modest, approximately three hundred and fifty dollars or so increase in the departmental request. That is also extending the provisions of the Highway CBA over into this CBA, over into this budget. So, it would be an updated bottom line number of, of a hundred and two thousand, one hundred and, um, God, it's not with me tonight. So, that is all, so there's an update there. One oh two, one sixty. One s- okay. That has increased. But none of this did. All right. Uh, would we be able to come back to, to this at the end, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna?
Oh, that the motion to table, let's see.
I'll make a motion to, uh, table, um, Agenda Item five B, Stormwater.
Well, five B or account number four-three-two?
Agenda Item five B.
Oh, five B, I'm sorry.
Stormwater.
I will second that motion?
Aye.
Uh, Chairman Hull is also an aye.
Um, the, um, the, this, uh, there's an updated departmental request here, Mr. Chairman. It's a, um, it's a, it's a very modest request in the amount of, um, um, a hundred dollars based on, uh, the updated, uh, the updated pay rate of, um, a new employee, um, that added about a hundred and fifty-one dollars to the budget. And, uh, like, we just like to budget to the exact figures. Um, and based on the Sewer Commission, um, hiring their employee before the budget was finalized, we, um, uh, they did send us an updated budget, uh, a request for a total grand total of, uh, uh, like four hundred and, uh, uh, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, four hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents.
That was four hundred and eighty-one?
That's like four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, four hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents.
That's the figure that's on the budget sheet, right?
Yes, it's a departmental request.
Mr. Pacheco, any questions?
Just wanna make a comment that this includes what the Board has recommended, a two percent increase for the stipends.
Yes. And, and also, the Sewer Enterprise Fund is a self-sustaining, uh, program, in the sense that, um, the ratepayers fund this budget, uh, rather than the taxpayers. Uh, I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that under account number six hundred, Sewer Enterprise Fund, that the Board of Selectmen recommend a total budget of four hundred and eighty thousand, four hundred and one dollars and fifty-one cents.
I will second that?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Uh, next order of business, uh, well, I should ask, are there any additional department budget, um, questions or reconsiderations to be entertained at this time?
I don't have any, but we may be doing that tomorrow night, the FINCOM meeting.
All right, so, 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 if we really quick, um, I think I identified, Karen helped to identify the issue. Are we updated based on the CBA in the, in the stormwater budget? The, the discrepancy is actually in, um, the town administrator's recommendation for the Highway Superintendent, because based on the CBA increase, um, that also- for the highway superintendent, because based on the CBA increase, um, that also informs the, uh, the salary increase for the highway superintendent, so that, uh, actually increases by thirty-something dollars, and that was the, uh, the discrepancy that I wasn't able to immediately identify.
In reviewing this budget, I do not see the delineation between what is street cleaning and stormwater.
Mm-hmm.
And I am fully aware that as of yesterday, it was over a hundred and four thousand dollars in this account that hadn't been spent. Um, we certainly will be looking at this budget tomorrow evening, uh, more closely. I, I was hoping that for tomorrow evening-
Yes.
-that we could have a breakdown that would clearly explain-
What happened?
-street cleaning, stormwater, and what happened.
Yes.
So that, in fairness to all parties, including FinCon-
Mm-hmm.
-that they can have a clear picture-
Understood.
-of where we're going, and, um, the taxpayers-
Yeah, no, understood.
-I'm sure are concerned about this free cash.
Yes, so, um, so if I could, our numbers, um, my recommendations now do reconcile, um, with the departmental request, there was, uh, just a very, uh, there was just a, um, we had to increase, uh, the, the stormwater portion of the highway superintendent's salary in the budget, uh, which brings the, uh, the, the fiscal twenty-three, um, request to a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and ten cents. Um, and that, it, that is now consistent. Uh, uh, what my, uh, what my understanding the issue was, uh, up until the planning for the FY twenty-three budget process, uh, the, uh, the additional funding, um, uh, to the tune of about a hundred thousand dollars, as you mentioned, Selectman Howell, um, uh, was, um, was actually included, uh, like, uh, up until the, um, up through the FY twenty-two budget, uh, there was an additional approximately one hundred thousand dollars included on the budget. And the, uh, like, and there was always, um, in, um, in the, uh, I mean, the personnel, the personnel expenses between high, the highway department, um, in, uh, in the street cleaning, stormwater budget was always split, um, and it always has been split. Uh, the issue is, I understand it, uh, uh, up until now, was that there wasn't, there was an additional hundred thousand dollars in personnel costs, um, that were actually funded in the highway budget, uh, like attributed to the stormwater budget. Uh, we have corrected that, uh, as we go in to the FY twenty-three budget. So that, so that additional funding, uh, for whatever reason that it was, uh, like it was included, uh, up until now is no longer there. So I just wanna make that clear, so the public watching at home understands that as well.
Mr. Mullin.
Mm-hmm.
And I know you work closely with someone new who was recently hired a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
I wanna commend both yourself and Janelle Vining for discovering this, because the perception to the taxpayers, and I have talked to them-
Mm-hmm.
-that this department was padding their budget. As I am aware, there are other departments that have done that over the years. And thank you for having the due diligence to scrutinize these budgets in such a way that this practice is going to be coming to an end. Thank you. Um, at this time, Mr. Pacheco, do you have any additional comment?
Yeah, I just, I just think that what Mr. Mullin was saying, he wasn't talking about padding any budget, just talking about some error that was made, and in the future it won't happen again.
Perceptions are strong.
And wording is strong, too. I'll make a motion that on account number four thirty-two, street cleaning and slash stormwater, that the Board of Selectmen recommend a budget of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars and ten cents.
I will second that motion?
Aye.
Chairman Howell is an aye. Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Thank you, Mr. Pacheco.
Thank you, thank you, Board, for your patience with that, too.
Acquisition, purchase, and sale agreement, two hundred and seven Main Street.
So, um, um, I'm, uh, sorry, uh, before you, uh, before the board and their packets, uh, we do, um, have a purchase and sale agreement, a proposed purchase and sale agreement, uh, for two hundred and seven Main Street, uh, like otherwise known as the Father's House Family Church, uh, like what you ordered at Tony and Smith Hall. Um, we, um, uh, we have been working since actually before the end of the last calendar year, uh, to do due diligence on, uh, uh, on the exploration of this part, on the exploration of this possibility to address our library needs. Uh, we started out, uh, we started out with funding an independent appraisal, uh, that, uh, that would allow the Board to do its due diligence and the town to do its due diligence, uh, like in exploring this option. Uh, we now, uh, we now have an agreement before you, uh, like a purchase and sale agreement, uh, uh, where the board and the town, uh, but the, uh, but the board using its allocation of offer funding, uh, which is the federal, which is the Federal American Recovery Plan Act funding, uh, uh, we have an abil, we have an ability to utilize that funding to acquire the property. Um, uh, you will note that the PNS, um, ha, um, has an agreement, um, uh, has, uh, has an agreement and agree, and agreed upon a cost of a purchase price of seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, uh, which has been backed up by our independent appraisal. Uh, like, oh, you know, like in that, so like in that, so that actually says a lot, we use the appraisal, oh, you know, which is based, oh, you know, based on a market analysis, oh, you know, and that appraisal was very, oh, very helpful to, oh, really bringing us to this point. Uh, uh, so we're now at a point, uh, where we can begin envisioning addressing our library needs, uh, which has been a very, very, very long time in the making here, uh, you know, and the, um, and the prospect and the opportunity to do that with the town and for the town is just incredibly exciting. Uh, like we do, uh, 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 we do, if the board is inclined to enter into the P, if the board is, if the board is inclined to enter into the PNS before you, uh, uh, we do anticipate having a phone comprehensive to the board, uh, and to the, and to the public next week, uh, uh, at the board's regularly scheduled meeting, uh, we're, we're bringing everything, we're really, oh, you know, have an all-encompassing presentation that, oh, you know, that, oh, you know, that really, uh, oh, you know, that really highlights the vision, uh, and highlights a lot of the groundwork that has gone into bringing us here today. Uh, but I mean, this is exciting, uh, you know, like we really ha, we really have the ability to leverage, uh, we really have the ability to leverage federal funding, uh, that won't have, that won't have, oh, you know, that won't have any impact, oh, you know, on our operational budget for acquisition costs, and, oh, you know, oh, you know, like can really, uh, really be able to fulfill a plan to address this longstanding need.
Mr. Mullin, thank you. At this time, uh, Mr. Pacheco, any comment?
I just wanna say that, uh, I'm excited about the possibility of the town purchasing Smith Hall for our new library. It's, it's on my five-year plan, I promised a new library, however, we're not gonna get a new library, but we're gonna, I think, gonna get a better library than what we have right now. The Andrew Carnegie, uh, public lib, Dayton Public Library is not usable at this time, it doesn't have a second egress, it would cost a lot of money to, uh, to update it. We've gone before the town, my understanding is three times for a new library, and it's been defeated by the residents. The most recent, uh, application that we've sought is to rehab the Andrew Carnegie Library. The state has approved a grant for us of four million dollars, we have to do a match, matching grant of four million dollars. This was about six or seven years ago we applied for that, we're on a list, I've never supported this as a possibility, we have limited pocket over there, uh, there's been, it's been said that even with that rehab, it's gonna last about twenty years. Right now, where we, we have our library in trailer, and also the kids' libraries in the basement, is never a good situation when you have the, uh, adults in one area and the kids in another area and separated, and the parents, uh, it makes it more difficult for the parents. So I'm excited about this possibility of purchasing the light, uh, the library, and I hope the town residents, uh, will support it. We are gonna be using, uh, if the board approves it, we're gonna be using, uh, offer funds, uh, to pay for it, and as, uh, town administrator Mullin has said, uh, we had an independent appraiser look at two possible, uh, vacant buildings in town, uh, one of them didn't become a reasonable, uh, property for the town to purchase, in fact, I don't think they were interested in selling, uh, but the second one, uh, we're purchasing, if we approve this, we're purchasing the Smith Hall at seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars, which is the appraisal, the exact figure, the appraisal that we got from our appraiser, our independent appraiser. I've had an opportunity, uh, the past few weeks to, to look at the building, it has a lot of potential for the town. Anybody who knows me, I really don't get too excited, but this is something that I'm really, really excited about, that the town will be able to get a library, uh, that will fit the needs, uh, for this town for the next fifty years. I get it, I'm saying fifty years, I'll have to come back in fifty years and advocate for a new library, I get it, uh, but I, I can't say enough about this possibility of us, of purchasing the, the Smith Hall, so, and I hope the town residents realize how much money we're gonna save. If we went with that grant, the four million from the state and four million, uh, to rehab that, the cost has gone up. You were at the meeting, uh, the open house, uh, for Bristol Aggie, where it was three hundred, when they started the process, it was three hundred and fifty dollars per square foot, it's now over seven hundred dollars per square foot, which means we would not get, uh, to rehab the Andrew Carnegie, uh, building for four million dollars from our tax money, it'd be six or seven million dollars, and I don't think it's worth it. So this is, we're getting this, as I, I get it, it's money, but we're getting this on the cheap, and it's, it's, uh, with so many capital plant, uh, things that we have to do in the future for this town, this is a great time, uh, this is a good example of how we can save some money for the residents and, uh, move forward with the library, and once it's complete, I'm sure everybody's gonna be pleased, it's, it's an excellent building, we're, I know I'm going on and on, but we're, we're gonna be keeping an, an historic building in town, and the town will own it, and, uh, it's gonna be our new library, and parking is excellent over there compared to what we have right now, so, that's all I got to say, just-
Pacheco, thank you. I too am ecstatic by the thought of this project. Twenty-five years ago, I participated as a school committee member on a library planning committee sponsored by the library trustees and the friends of the library. I experienced great disappointment when our efforts failed back then, and I can imagine the frustration that later committees experienced when their plans were shot down over and over again. Hopefully, those twenty-five years of frustration will be coming to a conclusion with the acquisition of this property. It is a historically significant building, that I am confident the town, under the direction of Building Superintendent Jim Agia, can turn this property into a library we can all be proud of. I might add, you've heard both Mr. Mullin and Mr. Pacheco talk about funding streams, and there will be many for this project, but I would, I also like to add that one of the funding streams will be the in-kind services provided by the highway department and the building department, and the labor that those employees will be giving in the, in the construction of this building, which will be at no additional cost to the taxpayer in regards to their labor costs. The town of Dayton faces capital outlay projects in the tens of millions of dollars, and that's without taking into consideration what the school department will be asking in the years to come. The brutal reality is Dayton cannot afford a four or an eight million dollar price tag for a brand-new library. The funding for this library will come from multiple funding sources, and it is our goal for this project to have a minimal impact on the tax rate, certainly nowhere near what a four or five million dollar project would have been. I would like to extend a sincere thank you to Selectman Ken Pacheco, Mike Mullin, Jim Agia, Dan O'Connor of the Library Trustees, and Jacqueline Tabarez, and to Pastor Jack DeGrasse and his leadership team of the Father's House and Family Church for their support and their willingness to work with the residents of Dayton. I sincerely wanna thank them for the time that they put in, but also the willingness to work together for the people of Dayton. I truly believe with the help of many talented people working for and residing in the town of Dayton, we can create a library that we'll be proud of. I would at this time entertain a motion to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the, um, Father's House Family Church.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen sign a purchase and sale agreement for two zero seven Main Street, Dayton.
I will second that motion? Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Howell is an aye. Uh, next item on the agenda, review, discuss, and act, Dayton Highway Employees Ask Me, Council ninety-three, Local seventeen oh one, Union Memorandum of Agreement.
Uh, yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I did, uh, when we were going through the highway and stormwater budget, um, I did explain the perimeters of, um, the, uh, the successor agreement, uh, for the highway, uh, for the highway union that, uh, uh, that Selectman Pacheco, uh, together with Highway Superintendent Ferry, and I negotiated with the highway union, uh, the terms, uh, the terms, um, are exactly the same of what I outlined earlier, it's, um, we have a, um, a, um, a three-year agreement with wage increases in the amount of two percent, two and a half percent, and, uh, like in two and a half percent, uh, we do have increases in clothing allowance, um, and, uh, like in a, in a professional incentive as well, and I mean, again, this is a really, uh, this is a really fair agreement to both the town and the union, um, and I do really wanna thank the union for all their work, um, not only on this, but in everything they do for the town, uh, you know, as we know, our highway department employees, uh, you know, they are, uh, they do work on our roads, uh, but they work in our buildings, and they do, and they do a whole host of things, a whole host of things for our community to make it, oh, you know, what we value and love. I'm about Dayton, and I really wanna thank them for all they do, Mr. Chairman. Uh, but we do have an MOU, um, that, uh, uh, that really enshrines, uh, what we have agreed to, um, as a town, and over the next month and a half, we will look to incorporate, uh, this MOU, the MOU into a successor agreement with the union, um, that, um, upon approval, we can bring, uh, forward, uh, like a full successor CBA for ratification, uh, before the end of the year.
At, at this time, do you ever recommend?
Uh, yeah, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the recommend, uh, I recommend that you authorize me as town administrator, uh, to enter into the MO, uh, the MOU on behalf of the town.
Mr. Pacheco?
I'll make a motion that the, uh, Board of Selectmen approve the country Dayton Highway Employees Act Me, Council ninety-three, Local seventeen oh one, Union Memorandum of Agreement.
I will second that motion? Uh, I, I'd like to amend that motion a bit, um, to include the authorization that Mr. Mullin be able to, you had said to-
Uh, uh, sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
Sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen. Sign on behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
I will allow that amendment to my motion.
I second it. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Next item, annual town meeting warrant article, recommendations and approval of the warrant. As we go through this, I want to let the public know that on the advice of legal counsel, it is not mandatory that we read word for word everything that is on the warrant this evening. It is posted on YouTube. Copies of the warrant will be available at the meeting. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, it is not on YouTube. It will be on, it is, I believe, on the tablet.
It can't be recorded from here?
I, I, yeah, the video is, so the video from tonight's meeting is going to be on YouTube based on the recording that Channel 9 is doing now. So you're like, so all this will be, so all this will be on YouTube. The recording tonight will be on YouTube once, so it is uploaded by cable based on the recording that is happening now?
Okay, so you want us to upload both the Zoom portion and our footage?
No, no, the footage though, I mean, I, so, so I assume it will include, I will, I assume it will include at times the, what's on the screen as well?
That's...
No? Okay.
Could that, could you make that happen?
Not without purchasing a fair amount of...
Okay.
We're not connected to that TV at all. All we have is the cameras.
So, so we're like showing the warrant on the screen. Like, we've already updated, we've already uploaded the draft warrant to the town of Dayton, to the town of Dayton webpage. And like enough, like after tonight, as the warrant is finalized, like we will post the full warrant to the town of Dayton homepage as well.
Thank you. Regarding Article 1, to hear reports of the town officials and the Capital Outlay Committee and to act thereon, it is my understanding we don't need to vote on this article because since there's no recommendation to vote on. Article 2, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint all necessary town officials and town committees not otherwise provided for by statute or act thereof. Once again, there is no need to take a vote on this since there is no recommendation needed. Article 3, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the amount of $6,914.15 to pay prior year bills from the following departments, the Board of Selectmen, Harbor Master, Police, and Police Department. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Article 3 with applicable Board of Selectmen budget recommendations.
I will second that. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 4, to act relative to establishing the salaries of town officials for fiscal year 2023 in accordance with the provisions of Section 108 of Chapter 41 of the General Laws. And in regards to this, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman, before we do vote on it, I believe there are some corrections that need to be made simply because we included the stipend.
Yes, so what I would recommend is, is, like, is to, to recommend, to recommend Article 4 based on the Board of Selectmen recommendations. And then, based on the recommendations that have already been approved, we will include, we will include those recommendations in the article.
Thank you. So I would entertain a motion to accept Article 4 as amended by the Board of Selectmen vote on the budget.
So just for my clarification, for example, the Board of Assessors Chairman, we're going to reduce that because...
Yeah, to what's been recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
And the same with the planning board. Because that's, they ask for more than 2%.
Yes, we will make sure the Board of, the Board of Selectmen recommendation is in line with the Board of Selectmen recommendation in the budget.
So I'll make a motion that we approve Article 4 with applicable Board of Selectmen's budget recommendations.
I will second it.
Does that cover that, by the way, the?
Yes, that is perfect. Yes.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 5, to see if the town will vote to raise by taxation and/or transfer from available funds the appropriation necessary to defray town charges and assessments as considered by the Finance Committee or act thereof. I will entertain a motion to approve Article 5 with the applicable Board of Selectmen budget recommendations.
I will make a motion that we approve, recommend Article 5 with applicable Board of Selectmen budget recommendations.
I will second that. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Article 6 on page 12.
To see if the town will vote to approve the following sums to be expended under the direction of the Board of Sewer Commissioners for the maintenance of the sewer enterprise for fiscal 2023. I want to entertain a motion to approve Article 6 with applicable Board of Selectmen recommendations.
So move.
Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
I second.
I second.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
I suggest a friendly amendment, if that's okay. If I could recommend, just recommend and approve it to fund from a sewer enterprise on Article 6?
To specify, okay.
Yes.
Sewer enterprises. I'm sorry about that.
Do we have to vote on again then?
If that's possible, yeah, just so there's a funding source in the recommendation.
Sure, I will accept the amendment.
I will second it. Mr. Chico?
I'm an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Thank you.
To see if the town will pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E1/2, as most recently amended, establish fiscal year limitations on expenditures from the revolving funds established by the town of Dayton, general bylaws sections 36.
36.
Departmental revolving funds with such limitations for fiscal year 23 as follows. Revolving fund trustees of the Dayton Public Library for copying, faxing, printing services of $5,000. Trustees of the Dayton Public Library, fines and monies collected for overdue lost or damaged materials of $8,000. Counsel on Aging Board fees, charges, and receipts for services rendered by primetime of $150,000. I will entertain a motion to accept this article.
I'll make, just for clarification, are we going to read every article then?
No, we're not.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 7.
I will second it.
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to authorize the treasure with the approval of the Selectmen to sell at public auction and further allow the Board to sell through sealed bid process according to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30B, Section 16, all properties which the town has legally acquired by tax title or to take any action relative thereof. Right, except?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 8.
I will second that motion. Mr. Chico?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town treasure with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of revenue of the financial year beginning July 1, 2022, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 4, and to issue a note or notes thereof payable within one year and to renew any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 17, take any action relative thereof.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 9.
Chairman Hull, second?
Aye.
Chairman, aye. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from, from available funds from the Mass. Department of Public Works for fiscal year 2023 for the purpose of expending funds for capital improvements of capital roads under Transportation Bond Issue, Chapter 90, of an amount not less than $303,883, or to take any action relative thereof.
I'll make a motion that we, Board of Selectmen recommend Article 10.
I will second it. Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to make changes in grade, take land by purchase or eminent domain to settle damages from land taken in conjunction with fiscal year 2023 highway program under Chapter 90 and the Town Road Improvement Program, or to take any action relative thereof. Do I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 11.
Chairman Hull, seconds?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 12, see if the town will vote to grant to the Board of Selectmen the authority to obtain whatever parcels or easements as necessary, to make changes in grade, take land by purchase or eminent domain, and to settle damages from land taken in conjunction with highway maintenance or road or bridge reconstruction projects, take and any action relative thereof. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 12.
I will second it.
Aye, Ken Pacheco.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 13, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen, subject to the approval of Finance Committee, to dispose of used items, return to them by sale to highest bidder, or to take any action relative thereof. Entertain a motion?
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 13.
I will second it.
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to approve of applying the annual cost of living to Mass. Department of Revenue, local property tax exemptions for veterans or surviving spouses under clauses 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, 22F, per Section 5 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Chapter 126 of the Acts of 1988, or take any action relative thereof. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 14.
I'll second it.
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to appropriate reserve from the Community Preservation Annual Reserves in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for the committee administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other expenses in the fiscal year 2023, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. And that would be the committee administrative expense of $5,000, historic resources of $12,500, community housing reserve of $12,500, open space of $12,500, and budget reserve of $82,500. I'll entertain a motion, accept Article 15.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 15.
I'll second it.
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 16, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $25,000 from historic resources reserved to be expended by the Community Preservation Committee for the hiring of a preservation consultant to complete the Dayton Community Wide Survey Project Phase 2, to update the listing of historic resources in town, or take any action relative thereof. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Article 16?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 16.
I will second it. Mr. Chico?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $50,000 from the Historic Resource Reserve as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to be expended by the town clerk for the preservation of eight vital record books, to include restoration, long-term storage of books, book scanning, and the production of true copies of said vital records, or take any action relative thereof. Entertain a motion for Article 17?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 17.
I will second it. Mr. Chico?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to appropriate $210,000 from the designated fund balance as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee to be expended by the Dayton Parks and Recreation Commission for construction of the North Dayton Playground and accessible pathway 2, or take any action relative thereof. Entertain a motion to accept Article 18.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 18.
I will second it. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the sum of $106,146,76 to be expended by the fire chief as the second payment of a seven-year lease purchase of a new fire engine and any necessary accessories, or take any action thereof. I would recommend that we take no action on this item at this time. I believe that this item will be further discussed and possibly brought up at a special meeting?
I, I, yeah, at the, at the 20, at the 2023 annual town meeting, why we don't have to take any action at this time is that the engine that was approved by voters last year and subsequently put in production is still in production. So we don't have to actually expend the first, the first year lease payment until we actually have the truck in hand. So that being said, it puts, like, it has put the schedule off a year. So, yes, that is why we have the ability to recommend no action be taken at this time.
I'll entertain a motion. Do we need to, do we need to make, take a motion to not take action?
Yeah, I would recommend...
Make a motion not to take action.
On Article 19? I'll second it. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to fund with free cash the sum of $50,561.92 to be expended by the Highway Superintendent as the third year lease payment on the 2022 street sweeper voted Article 22 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant of June 15, 2020, or take any action relative thereof. Mr. Chico?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 20.
Be funded with free cash. I will second that motion as amended to include free cash?
Aye, Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds the amount of, from available funds, actually, I'm sorry, let me, I need to reread this. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds the amount of $325,000 to fund the purchase of a new ambulance, or the amount of $122,000 to fund the first year's payment of a three-year lease purchase of a new ambulance and any necessary accessories relative thereof, or take any action relative thereof. Do I entertain a motion to accept Article 21?
I'll make a motion... I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 21.
I will second.
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull?
Just, I could, just really quick, if, so, if there can be a recommendation on the either or, so, I would recommend that we fund the, the $122,000 for the first year's lease payment and to fund it from the ambulance fund.
So, you're not asking that we, that we do the $325,000, you're asking that we just lease it? So, do we need a motion to, we rescind my motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we rescind my motion on Article 21.
I will entertain a motion.
We need a second on my motion.
I will second it.
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
I'll make a motion on Article 21 that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the, the town provide at least the ambulance, a new ambulance, for the first year payment of $122,000, and that money is to come from the ambulance fund.
I will second it. Ken Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 22, I would recommend that we take no action to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the amount not to exceed $150,000 for the purpose of funding a fire station feasibility study, with said study to include but not limited to an assessment of building and property needs, fire department operational needs, building and property accessibility requirements, and relative issues or actions relative thereto, or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
In regards to not taking any action, will this come up at special town meeting, or should we?
Yes, it is our hope that we'll be able to bring this up at special town meeting, but for the annual town meeting, I am recommending that we take no action at this time.
I'll make a motion that Article 22, that the Board of Selectmen take no action.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 23, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds a sum not to exceed $12,000 for the purpose of purchasing and or repairing two roll-off containers for use at the transfer station, or take any action relative thereof.
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 23.
To be funded through raise and appropriate?
To be funded, to raise and appropriate, appropriate.
I'll second that. Mr. Pacheco?
Aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 24, recommend that we take no action to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $64,000 to be expended by the Police Department for the purchase of one fully equipped police vehicle, including computer firearm, patrol rifle, radio antenna, and any accessories relative thereto, take any action. And I believe no action is to be taken for the same reasons as the fire department's feasibility study, is my correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Article 25, again, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds the sum of $5,000 for seal coating the Dyton Police Station parking lot and any necessary related needs, or take any action relative thereto. Do I have a motion to vote to raise and appropriate the $5,000?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 25, that we raise and appropriate $5,000 for seal coating at the Dyton Police Station parking lot.
Second, Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. 26, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds the sum of $63,000 to be expended by the Highway Department for the purchase of one, one-ton dump truck with plow and all associated accessories, or take any action relative thereto. I will, on this motion, ask for a recommendation from Mr. Mullin. Mr. Mullin, do you have a recommendation on Article 26?
Yes, I, I, yes, like, at this point, at this point, based on available funding, I recommend that, I recommend that the Board of Selectmen recommend that no action be taken.
Thank you. I will add that I've spoken to many citizens in this community in regards to this article, and based on their input, I too will be voting no on this article. Mr. Pacheco?
Yeah, I'm not voting no on it, we're not taking any action at this time, so I'm not voting no, so, I'll make a motion if you want, Article 26, the Board of Selectmen recommend no action.
I will accept that, I will second that motion.
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 27, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds the sum not to exceed $43,000 to be expended by the Highway Department for the replacement of a guardrail in the area of Williams Street and or Williams Street, or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Pacheco?
I'll make a motion that Article 27, that the Board of Selectmen recommend that we transfer from available funds the sum of $43,000 to be expended by the Highway Superintendent for the replacement of guardrail in the area of Williams Street and or Williams Street, or take any action relative thereto.
So, when I freaking recommend to raise and appropriate?
I can't accept that.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear that, that's why I didn't say raise and appropriate.
Yes, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate from available funds.
I just heard from you to transfer, I'll, if I, I'll rescind my motion then, and repeat it?
Sure. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum not to exceed $43,000 to be expended by the Highway Department for the replacement of guardrail in the area of Williams Street and or Williams Street, take any action relative thereto.
I'll make a motion on Article 27, that, that the Board of Selectmen recommend that we raise and appropriate $43,000 to be expended by the Highway Superintendent for the replacement of a guardrail in the area of Williams Street and or Williams Street, or take any action relative thereto.
I will second that. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 28, to see if the town will vote to fund through free cash the sum not to exceed $170,000 to purchase one dump truck with plow, sander, and all associated accessories, take any action relative thereto. I will entertain a motion, Article 28?
I'll make a motion that Article 28, that the Board of Selectmen recommend that the town, from free cash, take $170,000 to purchase one dump truck with plow, sander, and all associated accessories, or take any action relative thereto.
I will second that. Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 29, I will recommend that we take no action on it. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds total sum of $90,750 to be expended by the Park and Recreation Commission to install asphalt parking areas and all associated construction relative to the school lane playground, Lane Field Playground, and the tennis basketball court facilities, or take any action relative thereto. And I would assume, Mr. Mullin, that this article, that we recommend that we take no action is similar to?
Yes.
The, the fire and?
I, I, yes, the same reason, like, all these articles were based on, like, were prioritized and based on the review by, and based on the review by, by based, and based on the review and ranking by the Capitol LA Committee, however, however, at this time, we don't have the funding available to fund these priorities.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco, I'll entertain a motion on Article 29?
I'll make a motion on Article 29, at this time, we take no action.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 30, I will entertain a motion to approve, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire and purchase the property of 207 Main Street, including the buildings and appretentions thereon, shown on the Assessors' Map 20, Lot 25, containing a total of .8 acres, more or less, for the purposes of operating the Dyton Public Library at said location, under such terms and conditions as the Board of Selectmen may determine for the purpose of acquiring said property, or take any action relative thereto. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 30.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 31, I, Article 31, to see if the town will vote to approve through Capital Stabilization a sum of money not to exceed $150,000 to fund library building exterior and interior renovations and land improvements, or to take any action relative thereto. I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 31, that we appropriate $150,000 to be funded through the Capital Stabilization Fund.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 32, to see if the town will vote to fund through stabilization a sum of money not to exceed $150,000 to be expended by the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District to conduct a needs analysis of the Dyton Rehoboth Regional School District's Dyton Campus, consisting of the Dyton Elementary School and Dyton Middle School, located at 1,250 Somerset Avenue and 1250 R. Somerset Avenue in Dyton, and with said analysis to include but not to be limited to an assessment of building and property needs, and evaluation of enrollment trends, building and property accessibility requirements, and related issues, or take any action related relative thereto. I'll entertain a motion to accept Article 32 funded through the stabilization account.
I'll make a, a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 32, and that this to be funded through the stabilization fund.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. 33, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any contracts and otherwise undertake any and all action necessary to accept a gift of real estate from the owners of real property located at Zero Ria Sylvia Way and identified on the Town of Dyton Assessors' Map as Map 12, Lot 27A, to be used for open space and recreation purposes, with the stipulation that the Board of Selectmen will do a Phase 1 review before acquisition is recommended.
So, I don't know what a Phase 1 review is.
So, 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 the, so, so, like, if Article 33 would be approved, like, it would be approved based on the Board of Selectmen recommendation, that it be approved with a Phase 1 environmental analysis being, with a Phase 1 environmental analysis being conducted, apply it to a purchase and sale, just to, like, really emphasize that before we would accept any piece of land, like, any gift of land, that we would do an environmental assessment on, on said piece of land.
So, is this the seven acres that the pines, part of that 40, 40B development that they, I know when we negotiated, they're going to give seven acres of land?
So, so, yes, this is the land up behind Sylvia Way, so, it's?
Is it, was it part of Sylvia Way when they bought, I think it was 25 acres of land?
Yes, it's, so, yeah, like, it's, so, it's a parcel that is, that is owned by the Homeowners' Association now, that is all landlocked, which, like, would actually join, like, would connect two other parcels that are owned by the town in the area. I mean, the HOA don't, they don't have any use, they don't have any use for, so, like, it would just, so, it would join, I believe, the two other town parcels, and we can, like, and once we get, like, actually, as they follow up to this, I can present the board and the town information on this next week, Ken will be definitely sure to include the maps in the informational session, our four-town meeting as well, so everyone knows.
I'll make a motion then on Article 33, that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 33 with the addition that there be a environmental phase evaluation.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 34, to see if the town will vote to delete in its entirety Section 4200 flood hazardous overlay district and replace with a new Section 4200 as written, flood plain overlay district, and to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaws by modifying and adding following terms and definition in proper alphabetical order to Section or definitions as written, or take any action thereon. Do I have a motion to accept Article 34?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 34.
Chairman Hull, second?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Aye. Article 35, to see if the town will vote to delete in its entirety Section 5094 as written, requirement Section B and replace with a new Section 5094, requirement subsection B, or take any action thereof. I'll entertain a motion to accept Article 35 as written.
I want to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 35.
I will second it. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye.
Article 36 says to see if the town will vote to accept Pleasant Street as a public way of the town, or take any action relative thereto.
I will entertain a motion to accept Article 36?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 36.
Chairman Hull, will second that motion?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Could you read Article 37?
Sure. Article 37, to see if the town will vote to delete in its entirety Section 4600 ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation and replace with a new section 4, 4,600, solar electric generating facilities, and to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaws by modifying and adding the following terms and definitions in proper alphabetical order to Section 6, definitions, or take any action thereon. I will make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 37 as written.
Chairman Hull is second? Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 38, to see if the town will vote to increase the current senior property tax exemption under Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41C, from $750 to $1,000, or take any action relative thereto.
I will gladly make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 38.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Ken Pacheco is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Article 39, to see if the town will vote? Article 39, to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dyton zoning bylaw, Section 6 definitions, by deleting the existing kennel residential definition in its entirety, replacing it with the following definition of kennel residential, "A pack or collection of four or more dogs that are owned or kept under single ownership for personal use and enjoyment may be allowed in the residential or business district as a matter of right if the location of proposed kennel has a minimum lot size 35,000 square feet. If the lot size is less than 35,000 square feet, a public hearing will be required with the Board of Health. This also includes a personal kennel, as they find in Mass. General Law, Massachusetts General Law, C. 140, Section 136A. Note, this section does not apply to properties with three dogs or less." I will accept.
I'll make a motion-
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen recommend Article 39.
I will second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Uh, Article 40, I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen take no action to see if the town will vote to amend the Town of Dyton bylaw, Article 1, Section 6, as written, in the town law.
So I, I don't-
By deleting it in its entirety, adding a new Section 6, as written in the town law, so I-
So, yeah, Mike, so, so you're asking that we not take any action on this? This is a citizen's petition, I-
Yes, so there'd be no recommendation from the Board of Selectmen on this.
No recommend, there'd be no recommendation, which is different from recommendation to take no action.
I thought you said, uh, to take no action.
Well, a recommendation of not to take any action on.
Why would we-
That is different than no recommendation. So if the board, so if the board doesn't have a recommendation-
Right. Say no recommendation?
Yeah, it's a leave, it's leaving, oh, it's silent on its recommendation. If the board is recommending no action, then it's recommending to town meeting that no action be taken on the article.
Oh, okay. No, thank you, thank you for the clarification. I will rephrase that to state, uh, that the Board of Selectmen take no action on Article 40, as written.
That, that's not what he said. He said, uh, no recommendation, but-
No recommendation.
But why would, are we not making recommendation on this? I'm, I'm confused, I guess. Why wouldn't we take a position on this article?
S- s- so, so, so typically boards that, so, um, also typically boards don't typically take positions on citizen's petitions.
Yeah, I, I, this is probably the first one since I've been on the board, so I, I don't, uh, like, support it, but-
So, yeah, at the special, so it's a, so it's a special town meeting, there was a flag bylaw, I mean, there was a, there was a flag, so there was a flag citizen petition, um, and the board didn't, uh, didn't make a recommendation one way or another.
You're right. I wanna make a motion that the Board of Selectmen take, uh, what's that, take, no action, uh, make no recommendation on Article 40.
I will second that, thank you.
Campachico is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Um, I believe Article 41 is, one that is a non-voting article, um, to conclude any unfinished business with the annual town meeting, so at that point, um, is it appropriate to accept a motion to, um, send the, from the Board of Selectmen to the printer, or would, how would that work?
Um, s- so, we will need recommendations from the FinCom before the warrant is able to be finalized, um, but-
Would we do that tomorrow night, then?
Yes, I mean, it's, it's, or, um, um, so, so like, what the board could also recommend, uh, the approval of the warrant are contingent on including the finance, the finance, the finance committee in Board of Selectmen, and any updated final Board of Selectmen recommendations.
So, uh, tomorrow night, we could, based on what FinCom tells us tomorrow night, going over the whole budget-
Yes.
We may be, we'll, we will be able to change our position?
Yes, and we'll have the ability-
By motion, I understand.
Based on this vote, to allow us to incorporate any, uh, like, any forthcoming additional or amended recommendations automatically in the warrant.
To go to the printer?
Yeah. Yeah, so we're not going to the printer yet, we're gonna see what happens tomorrow night, and then after that-
Yes.
Would you rather wait till tomorrow to make the motion, or could we?
Yeah, I don't think we ought, we shouldn't make a motion tonight that go to the printer.
Well-
I, I know we can have changes, but-
Subject to-
I'll make a motion that the warrant articles go to the printer, subject to what happens tomorrow night at the FinCom meeting.
Yes.
Listen to what their recommendations are-
Okay.
And we may change.
Okay, so, sure.
I'll second that motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Campachico is an aye.
Thank you. Uh, next item on the agenda, review, discuss, and act, open meeting law complaint of chap, of May 13, 2022, from Patrick Higgins.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, we, uh, we, uh, we did receive, um, an updated, um, um, actually, like, another open meeting law complaint, uh, from Patrick Higgins, um, I'm just gonna scroll down to it, um, uh, regarding, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the Board of, the Board of Selectmen regular meeting on, um, on April 27. Uh, again, uh, uh, in the, in the back, in the backup, uh, information that Mr. Higgins had actually submitted, um, he's, uh, uh, he's referencing trying, trying to log on, um, to, uh, to a Board of Selectmen meeting on, that, um, was held on April 27, uh, but you can see that he was trying to log on to the meeting on April 26. So, I'm just going to leave it there, um, uh, because, um, it's very clear that on April 26, uh, the, uh, oh, you know, that was a day away from the meeting that was held on, on April 20, on April 27. Uh, uh, like, also, the complaint is that we, um, uh, um, and the board, during its meeting on the 27th of, 27th of April, did deliberately not let, um, Mr. Higgins into the Zoom meeting. Like, I, um, I did go back into the analytics, uh, like, into, um, into the backend of our Zoom account, uh, like, and I am able to show that we did let everyone in who requested to come in. So, uh, 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 so with your, uh, so with your review of the complaint, Mr. Chairman, uh, like, and if, uh, like, and if you does, uh, uh, like, and, and if you designate me as you have in the past, uh, like, uh, with the ability to respond, uh, to, to this latest open meeting law complaint, uh, like, uh, like, uh, like, I would be able to respond based on the information that I just presented and conveyed.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Mr. Pacheco?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Pacheco, I would, at this time, entertain a motion that we authorize Chi- um, Town Administrator Mullin to respond to this complaint.
I saw move.
I second the motion. Mr. Pacheco?
Campachico is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Mr. Mullin, any further business?
That is all. Thank you again for your patience.
Right. I'll make a motion, if you're-
Yes.
Entertain a motion, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second the motion.
Campachico is an aye.
Chairman Hull is an aye. Thank you.
Thank you.